Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, December second, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Don Spiker. I'll call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Stein.
Good morning.
To my right, I have Nan Flagle.
Morning.
Bjorn from IT. Lisa from the Auditor's Office. Luann in the back, our Executive Assistant. Brittany from the Press. And first up today is we have visitors and citizens. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board that's not on the agenda for the day? Don't see anybody online. Nobody in the chamber speaking up, so we'll move on to Lisa Smith, our Auditor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, as we all know, Arlene Schoff, the current Jackson County Recorder, has tendered her resignation effective December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, I've given you a copy of the official notice that was sent to all three official newspapers uh, in Jackson County, uh, notifying everyone of the impending vacancy. Um, we are following Iowa Code Chapter sixty-nine as far as requirements uh, to make notice and such. So today, um, is the day that we, that you as a board had directed me to say that you would make the appointment today. Um, and so I guess what is the board's wishes?
Um. I've only seen the one letter. They were interested.
Yes. Is that person in the gallery?
Yes.
Maybe you want to come up, introduce yourself and everybody see a familiar face?
I'm Jennifer Jones. I'm the current First Deputy Recorder here in Jackson County.
Been here?
Been here twenty-five years. Yep.
You wanted to.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions for Jennifer?
Anybody receive anything else?
I did not receive.
I didn't have any interest. No, I have to make the motion to appoint Jennifer, um, as our new recorder. And appreciate the work that you've been doing in the last twenty-five years and continue with the.
Starting January first.
Starting, yeah, effective.
Actually, so what will happen is, um, this will be a motion appointing First Deputy Jennifer Jones as the County Recorder effective January second, two thousand and twenty-six until the next pending election.
Correct.
That's my motion.
That motion.
I thought that's what you were gonna say.
That's what I was about to say, but I was tired.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nina, to appoint Jennifer Jones as the uh, County Recorder to fill the remaining term for our outgoing recorder, Arlene Schoff, effective January second, two thousand and twenty-six until the next election. Any other discussion? Thank you for stepping in. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Welcome. You're through.
Thank you very much.
You're official now.
Yeah.
People get a lot walking, they expect you to walk and talk different. They're gonna look at you.
Let us, uh, let us know once it means we know that we have discussion with.
I'm sure there will be discussion in the coming weeks.
Okay. To fill another position.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like me to finish out my, the rest of my agenda? Yes? So with that, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five Board Proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
I would second.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nina, second by Mike, to approve the minutes of the twenty, November twenty-twenty, November twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five Board Proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants to the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I would motion to approve.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nina, to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, five, or seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And in there, there was, uh, sizable payment of roughly fifty thousand dollars just shy thereof to the, the fairgrounds to settle up what we, we pledged for them. And there was also.
Thousand for some software or you're permitting or something?
Yeah. I don't know if it's sixty, I know there was.
It was close to sixty for, um, some solutions maybe or something.
Oh, I was gonna.
The new, um, high-series server.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We're there. Yes. Yes.
Otherwise, it was kind of refreshing.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve unauthorized signatures on a handwritten warrant to John Wogoman for eight dollars and eighty cents to replace a canceled warrant for the Assessors Conference Board Meeting on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
I would second. Is this something that wasn't cashed in a timely manner or?
So if.
Is it, we have a policy?
It costs us more than that to redo this than it does for the actual expense.
And that's why we are very, um, very encouraging that people ACH instead of a paper check.
We require it.
We.
I don't know if we can require it, but we strongly encourage it and we continually, as we're doing this, we continually send out everything to get ACH payments. Obviously, with payroll, that is a requirement that.
I still think there should be some way we can adopt a policy to at least recoup the expenses of doing this because they didn't get around to it.
Yeah.
Cause it costs more than that to redo this check than it is for the actual check.
We don't have to put a stop payment on it, though. We do not have to do that. We don't have to go to the bank and incur that fee for a stop payment. But there is a paper that he does have to sign to say that.
No, but it seems like the Philly process, we got four people involved to reissue an eight-dollar check. So it isn't, we do have a policy. Is it, was it in the parameters, the timeframe of our policy to redo that check? I mean, do we have?
Policy or?
Well, I know we stop paying after a year, but the state says we have to do up to what, three or five years or something?
Correct.
But.
We have a policy if they don't give us an invoice in a year.
So, yes. Yes.
So we don't think we can require.
I don't believe that we are, that legally we can require people to ACH.
No, but can we? If they do this, cause every check you get from anywhere says that no longer valid after ninety days or three hundred and sixty-five days. Can we at least say if we, once we void a check, cause you didn't do it within a year, you owe us X fee? Cause that's what it costs us to reissue, cancel the check, reissue the check.
Reissue with minus a, minus a service fee.
I don't believe we can do that, but here's what I will tell you is that we do have state auditors coming and I will visit with the state auditors on this to see if there's something else that we can do.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, reluctantly. Opposed? All those who put, uh, motion carries.
Uh, I need a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the chair and auditor signatures on the County Recorder's reported fees collected for the month of November, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion. Go ahead, sorry.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nina, to accept, place on file and authorize chair and auditor signatures on the County Recorder's reported fees collected for the month of November, one to twenty-five, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred, five dollars, twenty-three cents. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, we have a motion that I'd like to present today that would be setting the calendar near two thousand and twenty-six holiday schedule for county employees. It is Resolution Number eleven fifty-four dash twelve dash zero-two dash twenty twenty-five. And I believe that this mirrors the same thing that we did here in two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nina, to approve Resolution eleven fifty-four dash twelve dash zero-two dash twenty twenty-five, setting the point, two thousand and twenty-six holiday schedule for county employees. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all that I have for the morning today.
You bet. All right. Next up, we have Dawn Nelson, Dr. Free Communities Grant Coordinator.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Not bad. How you doing?
Bad.
The way I figure it, gonna be zero this week, and we got twelve inches of snow. That's more than we had all the night. We're just about done.
We should be.
You can quote him on that in the papers.
Mixes for different thinner.
All the cows on that one.
Be colder and not gonna be.
It could be minus eighteen on Wednesday night.
Yeah.
I hear you.
It's working.
Yeah.
It's gonna be cold.
Really?
Yeah.
Winter.
I thought it was just warm up.
Next week.
Two weeks, fifteen days, warm up till the fifteenth.
Yeah, the warmer.
All right, how we doing?
Oh, we're doing pretty good. So you guys asked me to come back. I will say it's nice to be in here without having to talk about contracts. So, um, asked me to come back and check in, um, what I've been learning, uh, because it's required to come in quarterly. About just coming in just to visit and what I learned and talk about, um, some of the stuff that's, that the DFC is. And what I've been doing is been to one conference so far out in Des Moines and a lot of webinars and a lot of. So that's where, at this point, we're still a little bit limited in what we can do because of the catch-up with, um.
The shutdown.
The shutdown. Right now, a lot of stuff like that hasn't still cleared through. So, uh, what I've learned is, um, Jackson County is one of seven hundred and fifty coalitions across the country. And a few things when we first were talking about this, you guys had mentioned things that you'd like to see me do individually. I've heard of those things. So one of the things I wanted to bring up to you first is the limitations that are on this DFC. And I cannot go in and educate students myself. Um, they wants me to find partnerships, basically to sustain sustainability, uh, after the grant expires. So it wants partnerships so that I can't go in and teach, but to find partners that do. And the other limitation is, although I agree with, you had, I believe you just mentioned getting to them earlier. I can't go in anywhere before sixth grade. Uh, everything starts at sixth grade and beyond, but sad groups can, and Bellevue has a sad group that does go in and do things with the elementary and part of this partnership and coordination is being an advisor in the sad group. So indirectly, you can get done. But I personally can.
I know we want you to do what you can within the brand.
There's the parameters.
Without the grant.
Yeah.
There is no.
There is no, so we gotta step. So somebody gave me this, and I love the analogy, is a frog in a pond. So the frog is the student, the education, the curriculum, the actual teaching, that's ASAC. ASAC has all that curriculum, does, that, those people go in and does the teaching. The pond is the environment that surrounds that frog. That's the DFC grant, the environment, the, uh, making the students aware the influences, just to bring the awareness of, uh, the dangers to both the youth and, and the parents that are, um, just to make sure they're aware of, of the dangers for the youth too and, and what's going on there. So, uh, that's kind of what I've learned off through there. The, um, what I had brought for you guys, yeah, that's, I'm gonna share with you some of the results. They have, what they do a core measure survey. And they do it every two years and, uh, three of the four schools do it. Uh, these are the three public schools. So there, it's a six-page, six-page questions, uh, and I have, uh, taken uh, questions or results. And so I've taken all these numbers for about the first three pages and turned them into graphical, uh, visual representation for you to be able to easily kind of digest all of this as I lines through it, when and how the students responded in the survey. So what you're looking at on this one, the question was, did they, had they used alcohol in the last thirty days? The first column on the left is yes and no. So it, it shows how they answered if they had taken a drink. So I like to look at it as, you know, ninety-seven, uh, percent, ninety-eights. Uh, eighty percent of sixth and eighth graders said no, and ninety-four of the eleventh graders. So that's kind of a good number. And those two charts, the other three were for cigarettes, marijuana and, uh, using prescription drugs. The one thing, I didn't do graphical on that because those numbers are so small that it wouldn't really show in graphics. Marijuana, the one thing I learned at the one conference and I'm bringing it back to you because I didn't know it and it runs full circle of why we make parents aware is, I, um, that uh, one in three students, uh, where is that? A minor uses, not the one in three. The minor that uses cannabis or marijuana in some form ten or more times before they're sixteen are, um, up to two to three times more likely to get diagnosed with schizophrenia and six times greater risk of suicide. And that's because of the effect with the depression and what it does and how it accentuates the depression. So all of those things all kind of tie back around. And then the alcohol prevention, the suicide prevention. Again, it's all because the alcohol increases the depression and they had charts up there of different triggers, and so that's, that's why it all ties in together. And the prescription drug portion of it, uh, the main reason for that one is that there was a figure that a half of the student, half of students who are heroin users admit to using prescription drugs prior. That's how they got started. And so then it escalates onto using heroin of some sort. So that's how all, that's, that's why the awareness is on and picked up on these, as to where, what I am understanding the connection is and how they all tie in together.
Yeah, I know there's kind of relation and not a relation, but you know what? I look at the cigarette use and the marijuana use and then them two in particular. Does this include vaping? Cause that seems to be a bigger issue right now.
It was not on the question. The question was in the past thirty days, how many, how, on how many days have you used marijuana or had ashes? So yes or no, I did or did not. Um, that is the question and that chart is the very same. Um, vaping is, hey, it's kind of funny and I did the same thing too. Vaping is actually the tool that's used. And the, the grant is for the marijuana. There's nothing specific in here on vaping. But it's all rolled in together for the coalition. They rolled tobacco, marijuana and vaping together in an awareness.
Okay.
Point.
I understand it's a tool, but it's when they put in the tool.
Then they're continuing, well, and then it's interesting too, because I just found out that in Wisconsin, they have prohibited nicotine in the vaping vials now. So people are going back to smoking because it's, the vaping is pointless. Because there's no nicotine in, uh, in the cartridge, is that what it's called? Right?
I don't know. I'm gonna ask you, I gotta have a pretty good job to do it.
Yeah. But it's the point, it doesn't matter at all, but yeah, it is. So then the next one, the next set of questions, like I said, there's more questions. These are just what, uh, I only got through the first two. Um, first three pages, I hope that's enough to try and throw at you all at once. And these are awareness and, uh, risk. The students' perception of risk. So how much do you think that you are harming yourself? And this was kind of why, again, why are we doing this? The awareness of the whole thing. And, um, sorry, someone just jumped in my eye. I don't know why, okay, this. Uh, the perception of risk for, um, alcoholic drinks, the first one on the left is what students feel if they have five or more alcoholic drinks, one or two times a week. So, uh, fourteen percent of eleventh graders think there's no risk at all of doing that. And, uh, eight percent of sixth graders don't think there's any risk to that. And so you kind of have to look and figure out why is that? And I think that's why we're doing what we're doing. Uh, the second one on the right is, uh, who else? I've got a sheet here. Uh, risk one, smoking more than one pack a day? Um, again, is, what's the risk? Do you think there is a risk of harm to you if you smoke one or more packs a day? So that's pretty good. Yeah, there's a great risk. They, but again, only forty percent of I love the graders think there's a big risk, whereas seventeen percent think there's no risk at all or a slight risk. So you gotta think there's, there needs to be a lot of awareness, hold and hold it to that.
I think some of that maybe comes from they see their.
Their parents doing it.
Right. And they don't see an issue.
I can't imagine that seventy percent of them, maybe one-fifth of them, say that they don't think there's no risk. That's, that's not logical thinking to me, but, you know.
That's how they answer.
Obviously, there's word verbiage on the pack that says there's a risk.
So the question is, how much do you think people was harming themselves physically or in other ways if they smoke one or more packs of cigarettes per day?
And their interpretation of that question is, are they gonna go out and?
And they mark no risk, slight risk, moderate risk, great risk.
You know? If it says, how much do you think it's harming your health? That might have got a different response than.
Well, that's a risk. I would call that a risk.
Well, I know, but again, wording in kids, there's a big difference.
Bingo. Bingo.
Sixth grade, yeah, but eleventh grade, you better be learning something, but yes.
Right. And eighth grade, but look how, look how it went down for eighth grade. It was higher at sixth grade. They learned about it for eighth grade. They figured it out, but then the eleventh grade goes back up again. That's what I found was in those things. The second page was marijuana, um, smoking marijuana. And then, uh, the last one was risk using prescription drugs and prescribed them. And, and what that does, what, what their numbers, how they perceive the risk. So that is the awareness part. So what does all this mean? Um, why am I here saying all that? Because there is what's called the action plan. They have put together the action plan. You guys probably have seen that, that they had to approve that action plan. In that action plan, they have goals in that. Well, for the first one, the first sheet that I sent you, the thirty-day risk, they've already beat their goals. They've already met the goals. Uh, they wanted by two thousand and twenty-eight to have, uh, youth, eleventh grade youth, reporting thirty-day use down from twenty-one percent down to seventeen by two thousand and twenty-seven. We're already under that. They're already, they've already met it. The second was thirty-day use of marijuana, from down from nine percent and twenty-one, down to seven percent by twenty-seven. Again, it's already beaten. And the third objective was about reporting, uh, slight to no risk of misusing prescription medications. And they won it by twenty-five percent. We're slightly under that already. So for those parts of it, we've already met it. But for the other side of it, of risk, the perception of risk, the awareness is where what I'm reading, what I'm learning, that's where everything really needs to be aligned, all the focus needs to be, I'm done to that. As shown by the numbers, because the awareness is the, the risk. That's what they need to understand. So these are a lot of facts and figures and what's been done and the, and the why. And, uh, hopefully you're not gonna hit me with too many more hard questions because I'm still in the learning mode. But.
Again, the process kind of worked out between the, the prevention coalition and Karen and all that stuff. It's kind of the logistics of the job and you kind of, that getting all ironed out.
Where it, it's just kind of, they don't even have a fight on your note yet. And that's what they tell me. Because they're like, just on, you're okay, don't worry about it. They don't know. They're, they're all up in arms because they all are trying to fill the other a- aspects of what Julie did.
Okay.
And so they're all trying to settle it into who's doing what. And so, no, we're not all exactly knowing who's doing what yet, trying to figure out what, what's happening. So I'm, I was sold to sit back and be a sponge and just learn. That's what I'm doing. So the next endeavor for me is compliance, um, compliance checks. But again, we still have to wait because those, you have to pay those people and then so we can get the budget due to it, okay? We can't do any of that yet, so I'm just. And ready.
Any questions for Dawn? Thank you very much for jumping into this. It seemed like you did it both feet, so, uh, keep going. We appreciate it.
Sounds good. Well, thank you guys very much. All right, have a good day. Thanks.
You guys are from the clerk of court back there, aren't you? You just, you want to come up and get it out of the way quick or?
Should be.
It's Judge Latham.
He is not gonna make it. My name's Andrea Dosland. I'm the new District Coordinator Administrator for the Seventh Judicial District. Uh, Judge Latham, it was planning on being here. He had something come up. He is going to be here later for the, for swearing-in ceremony. So one of the first things as the District Coordinator Administrator who wanted to do was go around to the different boards and introduce myself as well as, um, just get to know you guys. Um, this is probably one I've been looking forward to the most. It's my last Board of Supervisors. Uh, that's not why. It's because I'm actually from, uh, the Kalamazoo Grand Mountain area and find myself in Jackson County quite often during my personal life. So I've been excited to come, come here. Um, we do have Casey Gino Trout in the audience today. She's our new clerk of court for Jackson County as well as Clinton. Uh, like I said, we'll have a swearing-in ceremony with her at eleven. Um, and in addition to all of that, one thing Judge Latham has been talking to the boards about is I think it was July, there was a new law that passed regarding the, the, um, counties furnishing the courts. Uh, he wanted to pass on that the judicial branch was not in favor of that. It wasn't their initiative. We are hopeful that in our district, uh, we believe we got ahead of that and have done some updates to the courtrooms, to the chambers, to the areas, the clerks' areas. So we shouldn't need to be asking for anything from the counties, um, for, well, knock on wood, a long time.
We appreciate that.
Exactly. Well, we did do some updates.
Yeah.
We did some furnishings and whatnot and, and. The desk confront and.
Yes.
Safety as usual.
Yeah, so, so that's, um, something, the judicial branch wouldn't even mind that, coming back to the judicial branch at some point if the legislature decide that, uh, but that was kind of sprung on us at last minute. We're assuming it was sprung on the boards too. So we wanted to pass that on as well, that, uh, um, we don't plan on asking for anything. But I want to let you.
We appreciate that. It seems like everybody asks for something.
Yes. Well, I'm not saying we'll never ask, but at this moment. So I just wanted to say hi, introduce myself, and if you guys are sticking around for the swearing-in ceremony at all, we'll, we'll be over there as well.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Andrea.
Yeah. And if you need anything, let us know and we'll try to figure it out.
All right.
Nice.
Same here too.
Miss Becky, Human Resources is up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, just a couple things for you today. I'm not sure if it's first on the agenda, maybe the Sheriff's Department bargaining agreement was first on the agenda, so we'll tackle that first. So we recently conducted, um, union negotiations with our sheriff's deputies, um, collective bargaining unit, which resulted in a contract that was ratified by the membership last week. So the next step is for us to approve the contract. The union signs the contract and the contract is telling. So I would ask for a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Jackson County and the Jackson County Sheriff's Office Collective Bargaining Unit effective July one, two thousand and twenty-six, thirteen thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight, including authorizing the sheriff to sign.
I'd make that motion.
I would second.
I got a motion by Nina, second by Mike, to approve the, very big long paragraph you said there, but basically says we're gonna prove the collective bargaining agreement between the sheriff's, Deputy Sheriff's Department and the county. You got all that? You can.
Hmm.
Any other discussion? We appreciate the time you and John put into it, cause it seemed like it was a rather relatively painless and smooth.
It was, and the board actually called me yesterday and just kind of gave me a personal thank you. Just kind of was a seamless transition. We had very good dialogue across the table and sometimes it doesn't go that way, so.
No, I appreciate it. After by all, there, yeah, seemed to work out.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Um, so next, um, King Cap has been a deputy sheriff with us for just under a year and a half, and he has accepted a position with another agency, so he will be leaving us. So I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation from Deputy Sheriff King Cap effective December sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So move.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nina, to approve, accepting the resignation of King Cap effective December sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, any other discussion? And he did reimburse, cause we paid per party.
Correct. Yeah, we did have an agreement in place with him for covering some of the expense that he had incurred going through the IVA with the city of McFoca. So he is mayor, so I think he has written that reimbursement check back to us.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's unfortunate, but good work. Best wishes to him. Anything else going?
I have.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much.
Have a good day.
Signature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Luann, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, calendar for this week. Uh, this morning at ten-thirty, we have a work session at the Barn of Dreams Committee. Um, at eleven o'clock is the Jackson County Clerk of Court swearing-in ceremony for, um, Casey that was just in here. And at eleven-thirty, we tentatively have a work session on, um, the county attorney investigator position. Tomorrow, December third, eleven o'clock, is the annual tag meeting for all the counties and tag. That's in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. At one P M. is the Isaac's District Six Supervisors Meeting, also in Dubuque for all of you. At four-thirty is the E C I A. At four thirty is the E C I A's Executive Board Meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. Um, at five o'clock is a Wednesday's Are Possible Meeting at Innovate One Twenty for any of you. And then at five thirty is the E C I A Council Meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. And they're serving the meal at five o'clock. It's your spending the day in Dubuque tomorrow, Mike. Thursday, December fourth, at noon, is a Health and Human Services General Development Transformation Plan, uh, Healthy Hometowns by Zoom for any of you. At three o'clock is the Jackson County Compensation Board Meeting. And at five thirty is um, a Hay Cat Meeting by Zoom for Mike. Friday, December fifth, at seven A M, um, is McFoca the Leadership Team Meeting by Zoom for Dawn. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, December ninth, at nine A M. And that morning at ten o'clock, we tentatively have a work session with um, Conservation and Secondary Roads. And at three thirty P M, we have, uh, Dawn has a meeting uh, for McFoca the River Watership Management Authority Executive Committee by Zoom. The other bit of business I have this morning is um, action on the revised um, E I W A C E O Shared Liability Agreement. And I think the copy of that is in each of your files in, um, to approve it and approve what I've done signing it as the chair.
And there was just a few, one county just asked for a couple of changes and uh, there were a few grammatical, one was just some verbiage changes. So all twenty-one county needs to re-sign it. Twenty of the twenty-one signed it before. So they're asking us to do this because they want to meet, but by state law, they can't meet until all twenty-one counties re-sign it, so.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve uh, signing the chair signature for the revised E I W A C E O Shared Liability Agreement. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We appreciate it.
What I had for you today.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting? Wasn't very many meetings actually.
No. Um, I don't, I haven't really talked to Ways of Authority yet, see how it's going. They see there I had a little snow to move to get back to trailer. So, uh, it wasn't a trailer there this morning, but uh, yeah. I do, I know we talked, uh, again, it's a tough situation to get back and take a look, but I'm gonna on the east side of that county farm back there where that pasture goes back there, we're gonna have to talk maybe to Secondary Roads or somebody to do a little dozing back there, cause it get it's hardly accessible anymore. A vehicle, livestock can get through, but. I don't have anything further. No further business, I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to adjourn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a great day. Enjoy the snow.